The Grass Valley Planning Commission to order on February 15th, 2022. And this is a virtual meeting in response to Governor Newsom's Assembly Bill 361 and Resolution 202009, declaring the existence of a local emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Public participation isn't the planning commission meetings shall be electronic only and without a physical location for public participation until further notice and compliance with California state guidelines and social distancing. Plan Commission welcomes you to attend meetings electronically, which are scheduled at 7:00 PM on third Tuesdays each month. Your interest is very encouraged and very much appreciated. The meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 17 by Nevada County Media on the Internet at www.cityofgrassvalley.com or on the City of Grass Valley YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/UCDAAL. And then you're going to have to read that whole long little list of things. Indexed archives of the meeting are available by this link as well. Members of the public are especially encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at 530-274-4390 and email to public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting if they're received by 5:00 PM. And after that, they will be addressed during the item at the end of the meeting. Commissioners will have the option to modify their action on items based on comments received. Action may be taken on any agenda item. Agenda materials, staff reports, background information, related to the regular agenda items are available on the City of Grass Valley website, www.cityofgrassvalley.com. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the commission after distribution of the agenda packet will be made available on the City of Grass Valley website at www.cityofgrassvalley.com, subject to city staff's ability to post the documents before the meeting. If you do not have the means to participate in meetings electronically, please contact the city at 530-274-4390 and staff will be happy to identify alternative means for you to participate. Would someone like to lead the pledge of allegiance?
I will.
All right, there you go.
Yes. Please join me in the pledge. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, let's see, could we get the roll call, please? Taylor?
Commissioner Urbach.
Here.
Commissioner Bellanti.
Present.
Commissioner Coots.
Here.
Vice Chair Robbins.
Here.
Vice Chairman Warren Rhodes.
Here.
All five members are present.
Okay, and then, could I get a motion to approve the agenda from the minutes of, actually, the agenda for today? Excuse me.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Greg seconds.
I'll second.
Okay, and then can I get a motion to approve the action minutes?
We have to roll call first.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm nervous and jumping again.
You're good. Commissioner Urbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellanti.
Yes.
Commissioner Coots.
Yes.
Vice Chair Robbins.
Yes.
Chair Warren Rhodes.
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And now, I would like to ask a motion for approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
I move to approve the action minutes from the January meeting.
Second.
Okay, can we get a roll call then?
Commissioner Urbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellanti.
Yes.
Commissioner Coots.
Yes.
Vice Chair Robbins.
Yes.
Chair Warren Rhodes.
Yes.
Five yeses.
Okay, and then I believe we are then going to public comments?
No.
No, we're not going to public comments.
Yes.
We are.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to read the blurb?
Yes, sorry. Public, members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, guys. Voicemail at 530-274-4390 and email to public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting if received by 5:00 PM. Comments received after that will be addressed during the item and at the end of the meeting. The planning commission will have the option to modify their action on items based on comments received. Action may be taken on any agenda item.
We do have one public comment tonight, and it is a voicemail. I will play it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. This is Matthew Coulter calling with public comment. These comments are related to things that you should be considering in Grass Valley as the planning commission and relaying it to the appropriate parties, even if it is in Sacramento. If the city won't do anything about these things, I'll mention grading into Wolf Creek, grading into other waterways, Olympic Creek. This is multiple places along Idaho Maryland Road that you can see from the road. Grass Valley Recycling dumping off their hill into the creek. Wolf Creek is being used as a sewage trough. And that goes for Navo and Sons with their containment of what they do as a sewage company. So it'd be really nice if the planning commission could consider saving our waterways and not using them as trash dumps. Supposedly, there's been some stock work orders on this grading that I reported, but I'd like to come in and get the documents to see that. Because there was stuff done after I reported it. Burning in town, people are burning inside city limits and on the edge of city limits. I suggest the city gets involved with the Fire Safety Council and gets rid of some of this green waste that's all over town. Very hazardous. Road dangers. I see a lot of development happening. I don't see too much road improvements happening. As far as crosswalks, pedestrian rightaways, trails, anything like that at all. Pedestrian access, very limited in this town and getting worse by the day with people parking on the sidewalks and the construction giveaways that are happening that are taking away public property for private use. Which leads me to favoritism to certain developers that you guys deal with. And, yeah, it's a problem. Because I don't think anywhere in the bylaws it says anything about picking and choosing winners and losers and charging people more for the same exact thing versus giving it for free for your buddies as far as developers. So that's my public comment for tonight. I'm going to call back on number two and three. Thank you.
And that is the end of the general public comments.
Okay, then we'll move on to the public hearing. The first one, number, or number two, the tentative subdivision map, development review and plan development permits for Bearman Ranch Phase Three, 21 PLN-43 for the division of a 75.3 acre parcel into 60 duet-style lots ranging in size from about plus or minus 4,000 square feet, Lot 33 to 8,741 square feet, Lot 57. The project also includes seven remainder parcels designated as lots A through G. Do we have a staff presentation for this?
Good evening, Chair Warren Rhodes, Mayor's of the Planning Commission, Lance Low, Community Development Department. Before we get started, and as Taylor's queuing up the presentation, there we are. We did receive about five correspondents prior to 5:00 PM. And just want to note that you were for that correspondence and you are in receipt of that. Again, tonight is agenda item number two. It's a Bearman Ranch Phase Three project consisting entitlements of a tentative subdivision map, developing review, i.e. design review of the duplexes and plan development. Plan development allows deviation in city standards based on site topography and other amenities provided for the development. It's a 75-acre parcel and it's 60 duet units from about 4,000 to about 8,800 square feet. And it's in the R2 zone. Project is located east of Piccadilly Lane and west of Taylorville Road. And Martin Wood of SEO Plan and Engineering is the applicant and Martin is with us via Zoom virtually. Here is the 75-acre parcel to the north. Here is McKnight Way, the Target Shopping Center. You'll see Freeman Lane to the left and then Piccadilly, Piccadilly Lane is a residential street that will go into this area here, the project area, and eventually connect to Taylorville Road at two locations. Again, Taylorville Road is on the east along with Highway 49. Directly east is industrial lands, to the north is commercial. To adjacent to this property along Piccadilly Lane is low-density residential and medium-density residential. And to the south and west are basically forested lands. You may recall in 2010, the Bearman Ranch project of about 30 units was approved and is nearing completion. As a matter of fact, they're framing up the last home. And so that subdivision is, will basically be built out here in the next several months. You remember also in 2021, we had a project, Bearman Ranch Phase Two, which consisted of 12 duet units and that wrapped around the Bearman Ranch Phase One project with the extension of Piccadilly Lane serving both those. More recently, you may recall, the planning commission recommended approval of the updated Southern Sphere of Influence and Anexation project, including certification of a subsequent environmental impact report. That project was approved by the city council on December of last year. Within the plan, the city identified 10 acres for this project, in particular, the 60 duets. So in essence, the planning commission has seen this project to some degree. That Southern Sphere project was funded by SB2 grant. That's basically to funding to implement housing plans and housing production. And so that project, and that's why we're here, that's to implement that plan tonight. Introducing to the 60 duet lots ranging from 4,000 to about 8,800 square feet. It includes seven remainder parcels. Lot A is just north of the developed area and that's about eight acre, seven and a half acre open space site. You'll see a trail running through there, going through there. Lot B consists of the rightsway, the streets, utilities, the drainage facilities. And that Lot B will be dedicated to the city and those will be public streets. And then Lots C through F are HOA parcels of varying degrees sizes. And that includes drainage facilities, HOA uses, and, you know, again, drainage retention facilities. And then we have a remainder parcel of about 50 acres just south of the property. And that will include more trails and it also includes necessary easements and to facilitate construction of a regional sewer lift pump station that will ultimately be dedicated to the City of Grass Valley. You see that little box right in the center of the map? That is the regional lift station proposed. Here is the 60 lots, duet lots. Access provided with the extension of Piccadilly Lane. Piccadilly Lane is, includes a 42-foot rightaway and 32-foot road section consisting of 10-foot travel lanes with nine-foot parking on one side of the street. Piccadilly Lane connects with Orchard Lane, which is the internal road, and Roads B, C, and D, which have yet to be named. And it provides two connections to the east on Taylorville Road. Just to the north, they mentioned is Lot A, it's a seven and a half acre parcel, will include open space and a trail. And then immediately south of that is about a 50-acre parcel, 35 acres of which will be open space. And I just discussed that. The open space parcel will be left as natural state except for basically the pedestrian trails. With respect to fencing, landscaping, lighting, fencing will be installed around the perimeter of the properties. Rear inside yard fencing, adjoining open space areas will consist of six-foot black metal fence and then we'll have wood fencing elsewhere. Fencing will be constructed currently with the duplexes, the duets. Typical lot landscape will also be installed concurrently prior to CFO of the individual homes. The rear yard landscaping will be the responsibility of the individual property owners. Street lighting is, these are public streets, street lighting will be installed per city standards along Piccadilly Lane, Orchard Lane, and Roads B, C, and D in accordance with city standards. As you know, the site slopes pretty significantly. It's about a 40-foot drop from north to south. No retaining walls were proposed, however. The site slopes from north to south with elevation about 2370 at the north end and about 2330 at the south end. It, the developed areas are about 10 to 15-degree slopes, percent slopes. So it's pretty steep. They have to be proposing slab on grade foundations, so there's going to be significant grading warranted to accommodate slab on grades. And there's going to be a number of two-to-one slopes to essentially build up the pads. They're not proposing any retaining walls. As a result of that, some of the rear yards will have sloped and they'll be somewhat limited. But ultimately, the individual homeowners will be responsible for the rear yard landscaping. If they want to extend their yard and put a retaining wall, certainly they can do that. With respect to drainage, we have, the property drains to the west. And you'll see Lot F is just over one acre, will include a detention area for drainage. Now it also includes landscaping and some landscape just buffer that, buffer that use. That will be dedicated to the HOA among some of the other open space parcels. As you may recall, in review of the Phase Two project, the planning commission imposed essentially three conditions. One, they wanted to see, given the density, they want to see curb running sidewalk on both sides of the street. That's an ongoing condition and a condition with this map. They also wanted to see, except for personal use vehicles, all construction traffic to enter the site via Taylorville Road. And so that's likewise an ongoing condition. And then, as you may recall, the planning commission imposed a condition to have the developer work with the Yuba Land Trust on the design and dedication and ultimately maintenance and endowment of the trails. And so, so that, in reference to the Bear Yuba Land Trust letter, that is an ongoing condition as well. So they will engage the Bear Yuba Land Trust or some other entity that will maintain the trails. We've made it clear, I mean, we'll take the streets, we're not going to maintain the trails. It's either some entity going to maintain the trails or it's going to be the HOA. And I suspect that they would like the HOA to maintain all that, that trail. So they will be working with the Bear Yuba Land Trust or other entity to make sure that that does happen. The second entitlement is a development review permit. For attached units over five units requires a development review permit approved by the planning commission. These elevations are the same elevations that were used in the Phase Two. Plan One includes Plans One, Two, and Three in combinations thereof. Basically, three plans, six elevations. Plan One of about 660 square feet with a 400-square-foot garage includes elevation options A and B, which are shown. Elevations include 412 gable roofs with faux outlookers, siding materials, stucco, lap, and board and bat. We have Plan Two, which is just over 2,000 square feet with 400 square foot garages. Likewise includes options A and B or elevations A and B, which are shown. Elevation A includes six and 12 gable roofs with faux outlookers and roof dormers. Siding materials, combination stucco and lap siding. And then we have elevation B with six and 12 gable roofs, the 412 porch roofs. Materials likewise include combination stucco and board and bat siding. And then we have a combination of the 1660 and 2,000-square-foot units for Plan Three, which includes elevations A and B. Elevation A includes 412 gable roofs with faux outlookers and roof dormer on top of the larger unit. And siding materials coming in stucco and horizontal lap siding. And then elevation B to your right, six and 12 gable roofs, a 412 porch roof, and there's roof dormers on top of the roof. And the materials include combination stucco and board and bat siding. As you may recall, staff is supportive of these elevations. We did add four conditions of approval. One new condition of approval, the other three are the same conditions that were imposed on Phase Two. And the new condition is, considering they're going to use it for Phase Two and Phase Three, we'd like to see an additional floor plan and elevation consistent with the square footages in design. We'd also like to see, the porch should be extended and large so that's usable. So a six-by-eight porch with wall line extended beyond the garage a minimum of five feet. So we want the, you know, the wall line extended. We want natural materials such as horizontal lap siding and board and bat siding should be the prominent materials on the front elevation. Initial material such as veneer is also recommended. And then we also want the front elevation chair should wrap around to the, the front to where the fence abuts. So the front elevations will be included to the fence line will, so, and that'll be more natural materials. We, there's a lot of stucco here. We like the elements of the elevations. We'd like to see a little more natural materials along the frontage. Now, the last entitlement is a plan development. Plan development allows innovation in site planning. Now, there's back aspects of design to deviate from the city standards based on, you know, based on topography, based on, you know, clustering of units, based on open space, based on wetlands. In this particular case, we do have a number of things present. Plan development is requested for reduction of the minimum park size in the R2 zone, which is 5,000 square feet. So we have some lots that are 4,000 and we have some lots that are much certainly larger than that, almost 8,000 square feet. So we have an array of parcel sizes for this product. We also have building setbacks from 15 feet to 10 feet in the front yard. That's for the main building facade. Porches can go into that. So the idea is you want to really get the porches up to the sidewalk as close as you can. You don't have that human interaction, provided the garages have a minimum of 20 feet. Want to make sure the car is not overhanging the sidewalk. Rear yard setbacks are at 10 feet and versus 15 feet. Or actually, 10 feet is the minimum. It goes based on lot depth. In this case, the minimum will be 10. And then side yards will be five yard on one side or five feet on one side and zero for the duet units. Basically, the way these are constructed is you have two walls about an inch apart and the property line goes right between those. So that's essentially how they're constructed. And the plan development is twofold. One, it allows for clustering of the project of the units. It allows for an attached unit that is going to be certainly less than a single-family product and a little better price point. And also for me, it allows, again, deviation in, you know, it allows a little more creativity than otherwise if you follow the code strictly. Here is the Phase One, Two, and Three and how they lay out, including the trail, the concept of the trail. And again, they're going to work with the Bear Yuba Land Trust or some other entity on the design and maintenance and endowment for that trail. But that's how all the three properties or projects fit together. Again, Phase One is essentially built out, Phase Two is yet to be started, and then certainly Phase Three is under consideration tonight. Our general plan is urban medium-density general plan for units to eight units. Accommodates single-family detached units or attached units as this is. From a density perspective, we're right in the middle of that, that ratio, that density. And then we, for this project, we have a number of goals, policies, objectives that support clustering, support infill development, support preservation of existing neighborhoods, and support really just a diverse product, housing product.
Sorry, Lance. So that, does this project, it does not overlap into that little UHD chunk, or it does?
UHD.
The, or in high density there?
Yeah, it's, it's, let me point it out here. It's this piece here. This is city limits and this is it here.
Oh, okay. So the HOA, the high density is south of this?
Yeah, so that's, that's the property there. It's about 10 acres. And then just south of this was about 68 mobile family units, as likewise is part of the Southern Sphere project.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah. Okay, so 60 dwelling units, we think it's going to fit in the modern income category. And it was 125 units of about 750 units qualified for that category or required per the, the RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Again, the project's in the R2 zone and allows both single-family and duets as proposed tonight. From an environmental perspective, you may recall that the city was contemplating or adopted a subsequent environmental impact report and that was certified by the city council in December. The ER evaluated this project. And where the ER was prepared previous to the project, no further environmental review is necessary. So it's based on that, statutory is exempt from further environmental review. We've already reviewed this project and the planning commission and city council have already reviewed this project in essence. Number of resource categories were determined to be significant. And required mitigation, you know, air quality, biological resources, I won't go over the list, but those are all the resource categories that were determined to be, have potentially significant impacts requiring mitigation measures. Other resource categories were basically less significant or no impact. Along with the ER included mitigation monitoring reporting program to make sure that those mitigation measures are implemented and that those mitigation measures apply to this project or the applicable ones certainly do. And we'll make sure that those are taken care of through the course of this project. As a result of that, staff recommends the planning commission approve the Bearman Ranch Phase Three duet tentative map, development review, and design or plan development as presented or as recommended by the planning commission, including determine the project's statutory exempt, adoption of the mitigation monitoring reporting program for this project, adoption of finding a fact and approval of the map, development review, and plan development in accordance with the condition of approval. That concludes, that includes staff's presentation. Again, the applicant is here with us virtually. Thank you.
Okay, does the applicant have any comments they would like to make to the staff?
Hi, good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Martin Wood, Principal with SEO Planning and Engineering. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight and for you guys considering this project. I just have a few comments. I mean, first, I want to thank Lance Low for his staff report and presentation. I think he covered the project really well. I just want to make a few points or comments. One, we're excited to bring forth this project because, for a number of reasons. Some of the comments that were made by both the public and the planning commission in Phase Two, you know, we're talking about, you know, concern about fire and the ability for, for these neighborhoods to circulate and get out. And I, I think this is going to add a really necessary improvement. You know, I know there was talk before about gravel roads versus paved roads. We're going to have a paved roadway surface from Piccadilly all the way to Taylorville, creating that circulation loop in the event of traffic being kind of congested up there on Freeman. Also, with a project like this, this creates a significant loop in the addition of fire hydrants that will be able to add from Piccadilly all the way through to Taylorville again. Additionally, you know, with like condition C4, we have to prepare a, a, a fire plan with the city fire department, which is going to mean, a lot of this open space is going to get fuel modification and management. And, and so all of those, I think, are a benefit to the adjacent neighborhood as well as just good practice around these type of subdivisions. And, you know, we have this significant need for housing. So, again, very excited to bring this forth to you tonight and for your consideration. I am in full agreement, I guess, with the staff report and the conditions as laid out. I guess the only recommendation or clarification I would ask is on condition E7, where it talks about where we have to form a landscape and lighting district. I didn't know if we should add the phrase or annex into an existing district to where it could be either or. Because I think there is an existing landscape and lighting district that I think we're able to annex into. I could be wrong on that, but I know that's what we're doing on Lo Marica. So I just wanted to know if that could be something we could add to that condition. But other than that, we're in full support of the conditions as outlined. One other thing, just for your benefit, just to know. Uh, one other thing, just for your benefit, just to know timing of things, we have been busy on certain aspects of this project over the last year. That sewer lift station, the regional lift station in the middle of the property that will serve a greater region of. Uh, the southern part of City of Grass Valley has been designed and reviewed by the City of Grass Valley. Reviewed by P G N A and is basically about ready to go to construction. So with this project, if it's approved tonight and the twelve that were already approved. And with the lift station on its way, um, we hope to bring some more housing to the City of Grass Valley. So with that, I'm, I'm available to hopefully answer any questions you might have and. Um, oh, one other, one other point, the Lance talked a lot about. Slopes instead of retaining walls, you can see on this particular phase, we made the lots a little wider. So instead of putting the money into more, you know, four foot retaining walls to deal with the slope. By giving it a little bit of more width, there'll be more significant side yards on these lots. And uh, so a little bit more separation between units and then we don't have to put the money in the retaining walls. We felt that was a, a good cost benefit and uh will make for a better development and, and more cost effective. So thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Martin. Um, does staff have any questions for uh. Uh, Martin or for um the uh staff uh that just did the um presentation? Look Greg, I see your hand.
So one of my biggest concerns is circulation and traffic, especially when it, uh, the impacts that it's had on the carriage house development. Um, that, that particular point doesn't go to preserving um uh existing neighborhoods. It's been a, it's been a challenge for those people. This is what I've heard for the people in the carriage house. And um, that traffic coming in. So now we're going to have this road coming from Taylorville Road. Uh, how can we make that the, the better access point? I mean, I, I assume this is going to be paved from there. The other part that's, that hasn't been discussed is the whole Caltrans interchange with anything new coming. Um, from um, from that road onto Taylorville Road. And then of course, that one letter that strikes me about um. The development of that new um shopping experience there in that, in that uh, it's a Target store. And that's going to bring a lot of traffic. So how, how can this project minimize the impact of traffic through the carriage house district? Or the carriage house development?
Yeah, so I, I guess one way I would, I would answer that is um, and one thing that we can offer, I think. Being its proximity close to Taylorville, I think. Construction traffic, it actually makes sense that it's, it's going to be more predominant going from that direction. And one thing, if staff agrees during construction of this. We can put something that's, that is still passable, but a temporary barrier that is. Can be moved if somebody really had to get out in between this interconnect while construction's occurring. I think that would limit construction traffic uh immensely. And now that the thirty lots on the upper is basically built out. Now we're not seeing, you know, contractors and the numerous vehicles that are, you know, that are affiliated with that. You're just going to see, you know, residents that are part of the neighborhood now. So that's one thing that, you know, we could offer as a temporary measure that I think would pay big dividends and make sense during construction. And so we can work with staff on how that's crafted or implemented if, if that's something the commission desires.
So, so this, uh, are you going to wait to fully open uh that road at Piccadilly to Taylorville until you've finished?
Yeah, you could put a duets. You, you could essentially put a construction gate that maybe it's not locked, so in the event of a fire, somebody could open it and use it. But you just don't want to make it so easy that people want to go that way. So that, that's, that's what I would think would make the most sense.
And when does the road get paved and open for, through traffic?
Um, normal order of events is, you know, you do your plans, you'd get your grading permit. Uh, you'd grade the pads and the roadway, you would put in uh underground utilities, usually in the order of sewer first. Water dry utilities, and then at that point, the roads would be based and paved. It's usually a desire for the contractor before they go vertical to get all that curb gutter sidewalk and that pavement in. Just for ease of construction and the cleanliness of their site.
So just to be clear, um, as you're selling those duets, that road will be open?
Yes, if, if that's the desire of the planning commission, that can absolutely be the, be the case.
Any more questions Greg or is that it for you?
No, that was it. I was just concerned about the circulation and the traffic and that's really what I'm hearing, obviously. I'm sure you are, Martin. And it's the, like the number one complaint from, from the existing neighborhood. And I understand that, you know, this is, um, they're just, you know, that Piccadilly thing, that uh carriage house. Just what wasn't a through fair kind of a place. That's why it became such a plum. Uh, for the City of Grass Valley and a, and a kind of an enclave, if you will. And that enclave has obviously um changed. And so I understand people angst about that, but I think traffic is the biggest thing is just. But those duets and how many people are going to be there, I can just imagine how much, I'm sure you've done a traffic study. And I can just imagine the trips um on a daily basis from there.
Agreed.
Okay, uh, Eric, are you uh raising your hand there?
Liz first.
Thank you. But, but there are actually two roads that I see that, that you're going to be doing. It's not just the through fair from Piccadilly, it's coming down to this other unnamed street as well. So I think, you know, I think it's really nice circulation.
Yes, there will be two connections at Taylorville Road for, uh, for different connections there. But, but one interconnect that will go up to Piccadilly at this point, yes.
Yeah, no, I think that, that's really good. And this is really more of a question to, to Lance there. One of the comments that we received earlier was talking about the traffic coming then up Taylorville Road. And connecting to, is that McKnight that's going across?
Yeah.
Um, do you have a comment on how that's going to look?
Well, ultimately, uh, in certain Bjorn is, is online here, ultimately, there's some roundabouts. Um, that have been approved by Caltrans and we're, we're putting together funding or we're putting together funding for that. So there's, there's not a timing. Bjorn, you want to add to that?
He's coming on.
Yeah, I'd like to hear about that too, Liz, because I think um. Anybody that shops over in there, you already know, like it is like a pretty much a mess in the, in the, in that area. And if they can't, yeah, I, I, it will be nice to see if there's some a roundabout. Because alleviating sort of being able to go and use Taylorville, which for me right now, pretty much. Especially with a target, which is going to be very popular. I mean, if you've ever been to the target in Auburn, it's not easy to deal with that either, so.
Hi, good evening, Commission. Bjorn here. You want me to speak on the intersection there? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, please.
So yeah, that intersection up at McKnight, uh, McKnight and Taylorville was part of a um study of both sides of the. Uh, overpass there. It is part of our regional traffic mitigation fee program. And so as part of that program, essentially. The, um, about accounted commission is, is saving to fund those improvements down the road. And this project would be conditioned as part of its development impact fees to pay into that. That program and essentially help fund those improvements. Um, those improvements are quite costly, so it's not going to be from day one. Feasible to construct it with the funds that are available. We are ultimately hoping for a grant. Ideally, a big infrastructure grant that, um, who knows if some of those are coming down the pipeline, but um. We all know it's needed. There are deficiencies, known deficiencies at that intersection already. That's why it's in the program. And developments like this pay into that program to make that improvement happen. Target will pay into that program. Anything that develops in that area pays in the program and gets us closer to enacting those improvements. But again, it's very costly. Um, we can't put it on one developer to make those improvements. And even the city can't just take it on to enact those right away. But ultimately, the design that's in place, that's been approved by Caltrans and the city is dual roundabouts. On either side of the overpass.
Are we looking at a, so then, when is, when is this? The sixty duets plus the twelve, when, when will those theoretically be finished then? Or, you know, ready for opening, Martin?
Um, it's, it's not exactly determined yet, but I mean, the soonest it could start construction would be uh in twenty-three.
Okay.
So, I mean, if we had a construction season next year doing infrastructure and, and pads and those type of things. Um, you could see at the tail end of twenty-three, some houses, maybe models starting, that would be the soonest, yeah.
Okay, and then Bjorn, so that means though that, and what about target? When is that slated to be open? Because then I'm looking at like, if you have that with the, those coming into line like twenty-three or early twenty-four. Uh, are we going to be like years with, with dealing with this traffic? Sort of um, everything coming in before something happens or? And, and how's that going to work then if we add like, you know, I guess like another sixty, seventy, hundred cars trying to exit Taylorville? Is there going to be like a left-hand turn for them or are they going to have to, they're going to have to go through Piccadilly uh to, to access sort of railies and? Target and all that, because there is not a left-hand turn from Taylorville on to McKnight, uh, on to that, is there?
Uh, correct, it's right, it's right turn only at this time.
Yeah, so.
There, there is a left, there is a left into the uh target center, if you will, though, prior to getting to the intersection.
Okay.
Can't, so if it was a, if it was destination SPD or target.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right. I remember that. But then if they want to go over sort of the railies and stuff, they are going to be heading through the other, the other way. And for like the foreseeable future.
Potentially, you could have some, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, Eric or anybody? Yeah, you want to go ahead, Eric?
Sure, so with the understanding that grants are an arduous and uncertain process. Are we willing to have even a rough hopeful timeline or is it very much just? It's a thing that we're trying to do.
As far as the ultimate uh intersection improvement. Yeah, honestly, it is, it is years away.
Okay.
I mean, any Caltrans involved project is going to take a lot of design and, and legwork, but.
Got it.
Some of those infrastructure grants do prioritize and do push for um. Being enacted sooner than later, so.
Okay.
It could help streamline things, but yeah, it's not, it's not an easy process.
Would there be a way to get?
You just muted yourself, Kimberly.
Oh, sorry. Is there a way to get maybe a left-hand turn signal though before getting all the roundabouts? Or is, has that been considered Bjorn? Of a Taylorville?
Yeah, that was not um conditioned at all with this project, but um. We could certainly evaluate if there's intermediate improvements that could be made to that intersection to better, yeah, provide better access. Maybe it's a, a signal on that leg to um allow a dedicated movement. But um, that has not been evaluated at this, at this point.
Okay. Eric, continue. You have some more?
Yeah, just um clarification about the, I guess, the order of operations for the agreement with Bay Uba Land Trust. Um, so if we approve this, that does not prevent a future agreement and understanding with Bay Uba. Because they will work from now to design and improve trails to their. Uh, acceptability, because I'm just trying to parse their letter with what we're saying here.
Yeah, I'm, I have a little question about that too.
That, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
Um, and uh, just go back to phase two, you know, Bear Uba Land Trust uh. Took, to some degree, took issue with the developer not working with them. And uh, we came up with a, a trail plan um for that area. Um, and aside from that, Bear Uba Land Trust came up with their own plan and they were almost virtually identical. So, but the long and the short of it is, yes, the developer will require to work with the, the Bay Uba Land Trust or some other entity. Um, to maintain the trails, design and maintain the trails.
Yeah, I would, I would just offer it, it's a, our clients, the developers, they're for trails, right? So.
Yeah.
So we, we want trails. It's, it's an amenity to the, not only the residents, but public at large, right? So.
I fully trust that like we're all on board with wanting the trails to happen. My question is like worst case scenario, if. There is no agreement with B I, well, B Y L T in the end, then is like the city now on the hook for it?
No, no, no.
Like whip up some other thing?
Yeah, based on the conditions of approval, the way that I've read them and Lance corrected me if I'm wrong. But we have to design trails, we have to construct trails. And either the, we have to dedicate it to an entity to maintain them after that, if it's not the Bear River Land Trust. Or our HOA would have to maintain them and fund them in perpetuity. The city is not on the hook for trails at any point.
Okay.
And that's, and that's pretty standard.
Yeah, okay, that was just the clarification I was looking for. Thank you. That's all for me.
James?
Okay, um, yeah, um, first of all, I'll just say, I know I was in, I leave favor of phase two. I like phase three, I like the idea of adding duets to our housing inventory, so I really like the continuation of that. Um, and then just going off the traffic one more time, what's the plan? I don't know if this is Lance or maybe Bjorn on the, the connection of Taylorville two forty-nine on the south side. That's in the drawings of the, does that connect down there eventually?
Yeah, Caltrans is, is working on or had an E I R for uh basically the improvements along forty-nine. Which included some frontage work improvements. Uh, I think there's still. Um, and I, I don't know. Caltrans project?
Uh, yes, there is a study project in place to um evaluate extending that frontage road. Um, further down to the south along Taylorville. Um, there's also prior discussions of um. The sub Bayman Ranch subdivision dedicating some right-of-way connection over through Crestview area. And um, there are options there to connect down through the south. But not necessarily with this phase or this project, I guess.
Right, and my, my question was, is that any faster coming to fruition than the, the roundabouts were? If people could exit on forty-nine, that's the point, but apparently not. I have a free chicken head, so. Okay.
Fast is struck from any language, obviously, uh, in any of these situations.
Yes, okay.
I, I would just offer on our master planning efforts, just kind of looking at the options for the remainder of the property. We've always been taking that into account of additional right-of-way needs along that frontage road. If that ends up, you know, being what Caltrans wants to make a connection to the southeast. So approving this phase in no way impedes that from happening in the future. We still have the ability to do it.
Okay, any other questions before I ask?
One more question.
Yep, go ahead, Liz.
And wasn't um the veneer on the, the face of the, the, um. What do we call the, the duets, a requirement? Or I heard you say it was just a recommendation.
No, it is, it's a condition of approval and the recommendation, uh, the recommendations that I read to you are in the forms of, in the form of conditions of approval. So when they come in with the infrastructure improvement plans, the outgrowth of that is the building plans. Those building plans will be modified to reflect those conditions.
Okay, so.
The near the front, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Oh, go ahead, Greg.
Oh, this uh traffic uh business and Taylorville Road incredibly complex, complex discussion here. When you're involving Caltrans and the state of California and, and nobody knows timelines right now. Well, how, and this is a question for Lance, how can we prevent uh the default being going, everybody going through. Uh, the carriage house development?
I don't think we can right now.
I don't, I don't know that there's, there's any way we can. Bjorn, do you? Any recommendations from a traffic standpoint?
Uh, I mean, people are going to take the shortest preferred route regardless unless we make it really difficult. To um go that way, so I mean, this phase is easiest access is from Taylorville. So I, my thought.
So my thought would be they, they primarily use Taylorville. Um, if they're getting to the Kmart target area, they're gonna go up there and go left into that shopping center. They're probably gonna find a shortcut through there to get over to Railies. Um, if they're going south, they're gonna go right, right and get on the freeway or right over and get on the South Auburn to get on town. So I, I think most people from this phase at least are gonna use Taylorville would be my, my guess.
If I, if I could remind the commission that as part of that master planning and comprehensive planning. Process we went through for almost ten years in the Southern Sphere of Influence. Both in, in two thousand sixteen, when the first or fif- fif- thirteen, whatever, fourteen, when the first EIR was adopted, certified. And then with the, the, um, certification of the addendum. The city anticipated that we would have traffic issues down here. Because, and we, and we accepted that through that documentation and, and we reminded the commission and the council that. We anticipated there would be impacts, temporary impacts to traffic. It could be for several years because we were, it was unknown when Caltrans would, would, would can, would be able to complete these improvements. Or when, as Bjorn mentioned earlier, when we would have money available to complete the intersection improvements. So that was all fleshed out, we knew there was gonna be, as, as, as property developed in the Southern Fair. On either side of the freeway here, either along the Bar Metals Road or in this Berryman Ranch. We knew there was gonna be some temporary traffic impacts and we lived with that, we made those determinations. So I wanna remind the commission that we went through this process and had, we spent many years going through, um, with, with this concern. That knowing that we would have to temporarily live with some, some potential traffic impacts in this part of the, you know, along McKnight Way. And then, and then once Crestview intersection or interchange was put in. Once those improvements go in, the traffic will, you know, will comply and meet, you know, meet our standards and requirements and circulation. The, the circulation planning that we, we, uh, we've anticipated down there. So I just wanna remind the commission of that, that we, we spent a lot of time dealing with traffic in this Southern Fair. And, and, and we knew there was gonna be this dilemma of timing, when things were gonna be able to put in, so.
Go ahead, Greg.
And I appreciate that, Tom, at that time, were, were duets considered as, uh, like sixty duet development? Was, was, was that, uh, uh, considered, uh, during the, uh, traffic impact thing you were talking about like several years ago?
Actually, no, we anticipated about twenty-six acres of commercial on the Berryman Ranch property with, so we have, there was. A lot more traffic anticipated where Berryman Ranch is, where the duets are now, that was all planned for commercial, commercial and residential. So there was a substantial more amount of development being anticipated on the Berryman Ranch side. As part of the original approval within the amendment, the amendments that were just, that Lance talked about that we just approved last year. Those actually relieved or provide less, even those rural homes on that side of the highway. There's less overall traffic impacts because we removed all the commercial space that was being planned for down there. So, are, are significantly less on that side of the Berryman Ranch, there's a significantly amount less of traffic that was being looked at just, you know, several years ago. As far as was previously approved.
Thank you, Tom, um, I had a couple of questions, um, I, I would, if Bjorn and Tom, if you guys could look into. You know, we see is I have had to try and deal with that intersection over there, I, I use SPD and I came out all the time. And, um, i- if, uh, if a change in a traffic light could assist. I don't know if that's like a big expense or not, um, but maybe looking into that, uh, to alleviate some of that in the interim. Uh, could be one possibility that you guys look at, um, I'm not sure how that works, but just thought that, I thought that would be, uh, that might be one good way. Um, and a couple of questions, um, is there a lot? I, I see a lot of the, I, I see the two trees on each side of the duplexes. But is there any street landscaping or anything, or is it just, it looks pretty, um, bare to me? In terms of like some of the landscaping around there, and I didn't know that whether that was the case or I wasn't reading it right. Cause it could, you know, be some, somewhat of a heat island in the hot summer. And I didn't know if, how that was gonna be working in terms of, you know, if we wanna facilitate walking, um, and biking. And, you know, not grit in your car all the time, you know, that, yeah, this is a perfect little, uh, uh, community. To basically be able to bike and walk, and so it'd be nice to really encourage that in any way you can, we can. And I didn't know if there was gonna be any trees to line any of the streets to just, you know, not make it quite so hot in the summer.
The, there's, there's not gonna be the, uh, like a, a street trees, if, if that's what you're asking. It must give me monolithic curb gutter and sidewalk with the two travel lanes, there are always gonna be front yard landscaping for all of the lots. Uh, as part of the landscaping, we condition such that there were plant at least one tree on each of the lots. Uh, and then there's also conditions relative to the open, not necessarily the open space parcels, but the remnant parcels that are being maintained by the HOA. And those all have to be landscaped.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think for, not, maybe not for this development, but in the future, it might be nice to be adding, you know, more. It, it not, not necessarily fire-heavy trees like pines and all that, but some decorative trees. It's, you know, like they do for some of these other, um, areas, just to, I think, I think it just makes the, the whole development look better. It also provides more shade, it reduces temperatures, um, maybe integrating more of that as well. And if we're gonna be doing some of these, uh, you know, bit larger developments might be nice. Um, because it does, I think, encourage walking and, and biking, and that brings me my other point. Is there, I, I know, I, I brought this up for the second phase, is there any way to connect? This development for walking and biking to SPD, to that, that develop, to that commercial development? Uh, other than Taylorville, cause I mean, it's just a perfect opportunity for these residents to be able to walk. You know, not have to walk out to Taylorville all the way around, not have to go through the carriage house. Is there any way to like go access that develop, the, the commercial spaces without getting in a car easily? And if not, why not? Uh, Lance, maybe you can, you wanna?
Well, my understanding is the developer was working with the, uh, commercial center, the owners, the, the management of the commercial center. And was, was trying to negotiate an access point, Martin, do you know the status of that?
I, I remember that process and I remember they weren't willing to grant an easement to the back. We did look at one time, one, there was kind of a, the homeless actually made it a natural trail that was kind of on the, the east side of Kmart. That kinda traversed the hill and came down.
Yeah.
And I remember we inquired about trying to get an official easement that we could connect to that, uh, with no, uh, with no avail. We, we don't have a problem running a trail up there, but we didn't have a, a legal right to connect to their property. Um, and to answer your, uh, question about trees, um, we did anticipate like on Lot D where we have that Birmingham. And, um, that would be a, an ideal place for some, you know, trees and beautification of part of the landscape. And we got to landscape that anyways, after that is graded, create the Birmingham and Lot C as well. And as Lance said, we're, we are, uh, there's conditions that require us to provide, uh, landscape plans for the front yards to the city staff to review. And integration, uh, front yard trees and some of that makes a lot of sense, so you're, you're gonna get that effect that you want.
Yeah, that'd be great, cause, um, you know, I walk all over town and, and I, I don't bike as much. But I mean, I would love to, you know, just be able to bike to the grocery store, I mean, I, and, uh, it, it's, it's hot. And there's not a lot of tree coverage left so much in, in Grass Valley. And so by integrating that, I think in, in some of our concerns over the next few years, I think it would help. But, um, that's a bummer kind of about that, uh, that, that access. Um, Lance, is there anything we can do to, to facilitate that? Because I think, I mean, obviously, you know, people aren't gonna wanna walk there, walking through the homeless area. But if we could make a, a nice, pretty access, that could we work with them to do that, um, to? I, I think that just any way we can reduce the use of cars, um, and make it easy for people to walk and bike. To, to the shopping center, we should try that.
So, we can, so we weren't touched with the management team of the, the target, we could, we could certainly reach out to them and speak to them. Uh, my understanding is that they were adverse to that just due to trespass and, and liability concerns. Um, ultimately, it's a private property owner, private property owner negotiation. Um, so we don't really have a stake in that, if they say no, there's not much we can do.
Isn't that area really steep, too?
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty steep, yeah.
Slope, yeah.
Yeah, slope there.
Okay, uh, any other, any other last issues? I think I, uh, got everything, oh, the last, so will the utilities be above ground or below ground?
Uh, below ground for, for all the sixty lots, yes.
Okay, yay, okay, excellent, um, and then Eric.
We, we did, just, just to clarify, we did, uh, I think we're changing that to underground now, the developer requested that. But down to the lift station, we were contemplating a handful of temporary overhead poles. That would be removed as development continued to the south just to the lift station. But I, I believe we landed on that, we're just gonna go ahead and put it underground all the way.
Okay, great, all right, thank you, Eric, I saw you.
None of us asked about Martin's requested change to condition seven, could you repeat that and then could we get comment from staff?
Thank you.
Yeah, Bjorn's here now, uh, Bjorn, I just wanted clarification, uh, condition E seven basically indicated that we need to. Form a landscape and lighting district, and my only clarification question or maybe possible addition was. To add the word or annex into an existing approved district. Cause I think we're gonna annex into what you, the one you already formed.
Yeah, that would be expected, but I mean, I, I guess it's forming a district for this subdivision. But you're gonna be ultimately annexing into our existing L and L district.
Okay, I, I figured as much and it's, it's not, yeah.
A new, whole new district, so yeah, we could clarify that wording if it needs massaging, I guess.
As long as we're in agreement, I, I'm not worried about it, I think it's, it's clear enough.
Okay, then if, does anybody else have any other questions before we, uh, any other comments come in or Taylor?
We do have several public comments tonight.
Okay.
First, first one I'll play is a voicemail.
Running commission meeting, February fifteenth, Matthew Coulter. Comment on public hearing item number two, Berryman Ranch subdivisions. The years that I sat in city council and planning and watched this development happen before even a rock was turned. And trails were gonna be built and access is gonna be happening to Wolf Creek Trail and all kinds of fun stuff was gonna happen. Uh, that would bring that area of town into the other area of town. Instead of isolating it in its own little bubble, which can only be gotten there by vehicle. Also, how close they're being prammed together with the variances of a ten-foot distance versus fifteen-foot distance. And even zero distance for gazebos and such within the development makes it extremely congested and nothing but a sea of roofs. But I have a feeling that is your goal, a sea of roofs, freeless. That's my public comment for number two, thank you.
The next public comment that we received is from Jason McLaughlin. He writes, can you please confirm the number of units and/or duets being proposed for each of the following parcels? APN twenty-one, one forty, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-three. The notification map received by those in the owner notification zone makes reference to fifty-five and fifty-six as being the project location. For sixty duet-style homes that would far exceed the housing density designations in the City of Grass Valley general plan. The Berryman Ranch tentative map attachment to this evening's minutes makes reference to two different parcels, fifty-seven and fifty-three. As a project location for the sixty duet-style homes that differs from the notice sent to the area residents. Which is why this is under question, could you please clarify? Could you please tell us what is actually being proposed for all four parcels and how, how is the open space being handled? Can you please comment on what is being done in the situation where duets are being proposed on parcels designated R one? Are the parcels like these subject to rezoning? And is the public input being taken into consideration to stick to the general plan? Phase two is planning to, is planning to UMD for fifty-five, not consistent with the general plan. Can you please comment on how many and where native trees are being kept to reasonably maintain, uh, that natural aesthetic of? Aesthetics of landscape, are these being left, uh, distributed throughout the neighborhood or clustered into smaller areas? Has an EIR been completed and approved for phase two and phase three? If not, how are any of these statutory exempt and what does that mean? Um, what will be done to improve the Taylorville Road McKnight Way intersection? And the, uh, to encourage residential traffic from phase three to use that intersection and not come through carriage house? Something needs to be done to allow these people to easily turn from Taylorville on to McKnight. Or else they will be avoiding that intersection and come through the carriage house and Berryman one, they, Berryman Phase One neighbors. Uh, how will new public utilities be ran? Are these considered extensions to existing infrastructures or are the improvements being considered to upgrade capacity along existing streets? Hopefully, this does not involve tearing at the streets in existing neighborhoods, thank you, Jason McLaughlin. And that is the end of the public comments for this item.
Okay, um, there were a lot of questions in that, that second, um, comment, um.
I, I can tackle some of them here and maybe Lance jump in on some, if that sounds appropriate.
Yeah, that would be great, actually, yeah.
So, uh, first of all, I, I have on our tentative map that we're dealing with, oh, twenty-two, one forty, zero five three. And zero twenty-two, one forty, zero five seven is the, the two parcels that are part of our tentative map. So, um, beyond that, I'm not, I'm not sure which ones are referencing. As far as trees on the site, um, there's, there's very few trees in this particular phase that are being removed. Um, previous phases like the thirty lots up there, there's quite a few trees that had to come out to accommodate that particular phase. Um, one thing that we do as part of the overall design is you, you know, you work with your constraints. And you put development where it makes the most sense on the property. So we have, you know, we're in foothill terrain, so we've got a lot of areas with slopes and natural resources and things that we wanna protect. Not only for view, but they're more significant in slope, so we don't grade on them. So you can see in a lot of these different maps that have the darker shaded green areas that are slopes twenty percent or greater or thirty percent or greater. Trees aren't gonna be removed in those areas at all, so you're gonna see a significant, a, a project which is nice like this. Is you're gonna have significant pockets of open space that just don't make sense to grade upon. And, and all of our natural pine trees, cedars and, and the natural forests are gonna remain out there with the, with the addition of. In some areas, fuel modifications and some of the ladder fuels removed as part of the development. As far as utilities, we kinda covered that, um, you know, all these new utilities aren't going to, we're not, we're not gonna have to dig up the streets. In Piccadilly, um, there's some, uh, utility work that will be done at the lower end of Taylorville Road. For, uh, the extension of sewer mains and the installation of the sewer force main. But as far as electric and gas and those type of things, generally those are on the west side of Taylorville Road. So we're basically kinda working on our property or on the edge of the roadway. But on the Piccadilly side, we're, we planned ahead, most of those utilities that are put in there are stubbed and to the south of the roadway. So we don't have to cut into the road to make those happen. Let's see, some of the other questions, um. Lance, do you have a further list on that, I tried to get?
Well, we, we, was an ER prepared for these phases and the answer is correct. Uh, because an ER was prepared, no further environmental review is required. Therefore, by law, it's statutorily exempt from further environmental review. And then we talked about, uh, the question regarding improvements along Taylorville Road and we have discussed that already.
And Lance, uh, what was the difference with the parcel, the numbers?
Apparently, the only I could guess is there might have been a typo in the notice. Because the staff report reflects the, the, the same parcel numbers that are reflected in the, the map itself. So that's the only thing I could, I could venture to guess, um.
Okay, and then I guess to confirm, there are twelve lot, twelve duets going in, in the phase two.
That were.
And sixty in phase three, and what are the, um, excuse me, what are the prices gonna be generally? For some of those, you know, I know it was moderate income, what, what is that approximately?
You know, a, a developer never wants to commit to that because
Yeah, no, I, I mean.
We all have seen what has happened to building, uh, materials. The one thing, the one thing I will say for certain is they were excited when they did phase two and this phase for bringing forth this duet product because that has the potential of coming in at a slightly lower price point, we know there's a lot of potential buyers in that market.
There is.
That's, that's their desires to try to hit that, um, and that's why they went for the, uh, the duet type, uh, unit.
Okay. Okay, uh, does that, I believe, um, and, uh, is there, there's no more public comments, is that correct? And no more questions from, from any of the commissioners? Okay, are we, uh, then, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we determine the project statutorily exempt as the appropriate level of environmental review in accordance with SEQA and guidelines that we adopt the Southern Sphere of Influence and Annexation Project M M R P, implementing and monitoring all mitigation measures in accordance with SEQA and guidelines that we adopt the findings of fact for approval of the tentative subdivision map development review and plan development as presented in the staff report and that we approve the tentative subdivision map development review and plan development in accordance with the conditions of approval as presented by staff.
I will second that.
Okay, then we take a vote then, please, roll call.
Commissioner Arba?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Coots?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robbins?
Gladly, yes.
Chairman Warren Rhodes?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Okay.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, thank you.
And I will, I'm gonna try and do the work with the, with you Martin possibly and, and the target to see if we can somehow work some kind of access out for the residents there la- later on. Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, then let me get back to this other page. Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, item, public hearing, item number three, tentative parcel map, uh, twenty-one P L N dash forty-seven. Map for the division of a, uh, plus minus two acre parcel into two one acre parcels at three two, three two two Hubbard Road. And then I think staff does, uh, has a presentation?
Yes, good evening Chair Warren Rhodes, Planning Commission Lance Low, Community Development Department. Again, before tonight is a tentative parcel map, there's a two acre parcel into one uh, or two equal one equal parcels in the residential estate zone, project located three twenty-two Hubbard Road and Sandy Jansen of California Survey Company is the applicant, I believe Sandy is with us virtually. Here is the two acre property, um, Nevada City Highway, Hubbard Road comes off the Nevada City Highway, Hubbard Road is about twelve foot gravel roadway, uh, coming off of Nevada City Highway. Uh, that at the property connects to Atkins Road, which is about a twenty foot, uh, gravel road and then it turns into a paved road uh, which connects to ultimately, there's a gate there and is a private easement, connects to Glenwood Pines Court which is likewise a private cul-de-sac which again connects to Glenwood Road. Um, it's kind of, it's an odd shaped property, it's one of the very few properties in the residential estate zone. So this property and the property to the north are, have a residential estate zoning designation. North of that is the county and then the property is surrounded in large part by larger residential and low density residential uses. Here is the parcel map, uh, splitting the two acres into two equal one acre parcels. The photograph from the upper left is taken right at the upper portion here. Power pole, this is the access to parcel one. Uh, photograph in the center is taken along Hubbard Road is of access to the property about right here. Um, looking at the house and the photo to the right uh, is at, uh, the junction of Atkins Road and, and Hubbard Road. Uh, it's an odd shaped property, uh, equally, uh, likewise, the parcel configuration is odd shaped. Um, and, uh, so it, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult split. Um, we're trying to get two one acre properties out of this uh, and the, the end result is they want to, properties in trust, they want to, uh, subdivide and have a second unit built or another unit built on parcel two, uh, outside of the trust. Uh, parcel one contains existing single family dwelling, carport and shed. Uh, access provided via an existing bridge driveway at the northwest corner of the property connecting with Hubbard Road. Uh, the property, uh, the regular property line configuration adheres to the minimum one acre parcel size and is, is consistent with existing fencing garden, other site improvements, although it looks awkward, it does uh, align with existing site improvements on parcel one. Um, access again is provided on Hubbard Road, which is a, a minimal twelve foot wide gravel road. Uh, we also have a railroad right away on the southern portion of the property. Uh, and that, uh, we've done some title research on, there doesn't appear to be any heirs of the railroad company. So it's kinda this, uh, property that's a void of ownership. Uh, and we have received some complaints over the years regarding maintenance, if we provide maintenance of that strip, just can't really figure out what to do with that strip of land there, but any event, it's just, it borders this property and Atkins Road. Uh, we have conditioned the project and that is the fire department has conditioned the project to not allow any more development than in all are already authorized, meaning that on the existing two acre property, they can have a house and a second unit. Now they're wanting to subdivide this and we've added a condition that can only build one additional home just due to the limited access and that came from the fire department, so, uh, and, uh, so what they wanna do is, uh, leave the existing home under the trust, build a second unit under private ownership. Uh, and we would include a condition that would be on the final map and would be on the resulting deeds that they only get one unit for each of the respective lots, no additional units will be constructed in addition to the one unit, so uh, they, they can have a unit now and they'll end up with a, a, a unit on a new property but it'll still be the same number of units as they could commit currently. Um, with that, staff's recommending that the planning commission, uh, determine the project category exempt. Uh, adopt, uh, approve the tentative subdivision map or parcel map in this case in accordance with the conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation, I believe Sandy Jansen of, um, California Survey is with us.
Okay, does, uh, does she have any, uh, comments? Uh, Sandy, do you have any comments for the, for the planning commission?
I am Sandy Jansen and, um, I just appreciate that we will get this approved.
Okay, thank you Sandy, um, commissioners, uh, who, who has, uh, some questions for, uh, either staff or the applicant? Anyone? I can't see, Liz, I barely, I can barely see you on my screen, okay, I see. I, I said, well, no, I'm, I, it's so tiny until they, they focus back in, okay Liz.
Okay, um. Lance, where, I, I missed where you were pointing, um, I tried to drive this today and I got really confused as to where everything was. Where would you anticipate Egress coming for the second parcel? Where?
Well, i- i- there's two options, it can come off, it's a private, it borders both Hubbard Road and Atkins Road. So it, it, it.
I, I, I can't.
Yeah, and, and, well, if we go back to the map. And it's hard because, yeah, i- it's, it's not real marked, but, uh, well, maybe go back to the site. The aerial photograph.
You're not alone Liz, people get lost in, in our neighborhood all the time.
With your neighborhood and I needed you.
So, Hubbard, if I can, I'll approach Hubbard Road, Nevada City Highway, Hubbard Road. Um, Tractor Spies right here, Hubbard Road is, uh, a road has a little sign, right? It's not even a street sign, it's a sign on a little post, uh, Hubbard Road, it's a gravel twelve foot road, twelve foot wide gravel road, it's about nine hundred feet length, that, looking at the aerial, it looks like it serves about fifteen, seventeen homes. Uh, and it goes up and around and ends up here somewhere and then this access here is the pri- is axed private for this house. And then this Hubbard Road connects to Atkins Road, which is a twenty foot gravel road that ends somewhere around here and then it's paved from here to the cul-de-sac. And this is all private and there is a gate here, a fire gate here and leading to this cul-de-sac and this cul-de-sac which is private ends, connects to Glenwood Road, which is public.
Yes.
So they could conceivably get access through the existing or through Atkins Road. It, the property fronts on both.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? I, I'm assuming that the, yeah, it sounds like the fire department signed off though on being able to a- access this if we just, if they add one additional unit, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, um, there, there's, again, right now with the two acre property, they can have a house and a second unit. With this parcel slip, parcel map rather, they have the existing home and they can construct an additional home and, and just so you know, that new home will require a fire suppression system whereas a second unit on the existing home property would not.
Okay. Anybody else with questions, Eric? Nope, okay, Greg, no? And James, no?
No.
Okay, uh, were there any other public comments coming in on this, Taylor?
We do have one public comment from Matthew Coulter.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Three comment for public hearing items. Lot splitting, a lot of lot splitting going on in town, has been for quite a while, I wanna say some of the first ones were there on South Church Street at the corner of Walsh. And that was a pretty contentious item that went around for a while and, uh, it finally was split, now it's split again. And it's not, it's lost its complete charm for what it originally was, which was a double lot as the one in the middle of the block is with the historic hospital and the one at the end of the block which I lived in is a historic house on South Church Street, so this lot splitting is ridiculous what you're doing. I know you make money from it, that's great, but you're adding to the fire danger, you're adding to the congestion. You're adding to the overall impact on everything that's not being addressed in town like the roads, the sewage, I can point out twelve different leaking sewage places in town immediately. These things need to be dealt with before you take on more and more and more, you can't even keep up on what you have, it's a nightmare. Lo Marica is a perfect example of your inadequacies as a commission. What a nightmare and the air quality control, been working with those folks, water commission also. You'll be hearing from those people, so I would definitely need a contact person for city hall for those organizations to get ahold of you. Thank you, Matthew Coulter.
And that is the end of the public comments.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, if that's the case and there are no more, uh, comments or questions uh, then would someone like to, um, bring a motion to, uh, consider this item?
I move that we determine the project categorically exempt as the appropriate level of environmental review in accordance with SEQA. We adopt the findings of fact for approval of the tentative parcel map as presented in the staff report and we approve the tentative parcel map in accordance with the conditions of approval as presented by staff.
A second, okay, uh, then we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Arba?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Coots?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robbins?
Yes.
Chairman Warren Rhodes?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Okay. Alright, and then I think, uh, we will now then move on to the council items, let me see here, make sure I'm going through this list. Um, there was other business, uh, review of city council items?
Yeah, this is Tom Last, Community Development Director, so, um, the last council meeting, um, or I guess meeting after the city, two meetings ago, the, um, city council did approve the recreational yoga park project off of the Courtney Road and the annexation. Um, and they had the second reading last meeting, so of the ordinance itself, so that, that project's moving forward, um, through the LAFCO process now, the county LAFCO process. And that's really the only main item.
I also, um, thank you Tom, I, I saw that they were also, uh, planning to review the strategic plan and I wasn't sure Tom, um, how maybe our, our members wanted to make comments on any of that? Um, do we do, uh, is it okay just direct, I know they were gonna, they're planning, um, a meeting that will, uh, include stakeholders and I didn't know, um, if maybe one, one or more of us should be included in one of those meetings?
So Chairman, there currently is a survey on our website.
Okay.
Polling people for their input. Uh, we are going to get that input and kind of calculate the data and figure out kinda give us a good baseline of what, where we wanna kinda go with that. We also have scheduled a series of meetings for a, um, a core group of people from all over town, um, it's a small select that they did the original strategic plan for us, so we are, um, pulling them to have them discuss in meetings what's happened, what we wanna change if we wanna change anything, if we wanna update things. Um, we have those meetings scheduled, I believe in the next week or so. And then once we do that, we will then take it back to the commission and at that point it will be a public meeting for even more or council, that's what I meant, for even more public, so right now the best you, thing the public can do is answer the survey that is on the website.
Okay, and I just wanted to make everybody, uh, aware of that, um, because I know we wanted to be able to have some in, you know, inputs into how some of that's gonna be, um, a- assessed and, and some of the, the, um, issues that maybe we wanted to let them know that we're also, uh, uh, thinking about, so that's, uh, when, when's the survey, uh, closing, Taylor?
Uh, at this point, it, there's no deadline, so we're gonna keep it open as long as people continue to answer the survey.
Okay, great, um, and then any other, um, uh, future meetings, hearings or study sessions that anybody was, would be interested in, right, yep, Greg?
Uh, so this is for Tom, um, what is the status of the Dorsey Marketplace Development?
Um, it's, there's a, it's still in the court system, there was, there was an appeal filed and we are waiting for that hearing to be held with the judge, so it's down in Sacramento right now, still.
So is there a time, is there a timeline?
No, I, the city did, I, I don't remember what the legal term was called, but we did get we are trying to get an expedited review of that and I think the judge did agree to that, so right now I think both parties are putting, you know, their arguments together and submitting that to the courts. I, I, but there's not a specific dead, a dead date at this point that I have been given. Unfortunately, so.
Can I just, um, think, in two cases that I know that were down there and it took two years to go and get through the appellate court.
Yeah, I think that's what, that's why we applied for the expedited review and, you know, for multiple reasons. And the judge did grant that, so hopefully it'll be a year, a lot less than three years.
Okay, okay, uh, any other reports or anything that anybody wanted to add before we, uh, close the meeting for tonight? Okay, alright, well, I have successfully managed to, uh, not disrupt this and even and early, thank you Eric for, uh, being incredibly good at reading out those motions. And then, uh, I guess we'll see everybody, uh, next time, same bat channel.
Well done, Madam Chair.
Thank you, night guys, appreciate it everybody.
Bye folks.